Yeah, all right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Temecula Planning Commission meeting of May 4th, 2022. Commissioner Hagel, lead us in a flag salute.
Put your hand over your heart with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagel. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hagel?
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz is excused absence. Commissioner Telesio, excused absence. Commissioner Turley Trejo?
Here.
And Commissioner Watts?
Here.
Do we have any requests for public comments tonight? Or is that an agenda item? Very good. I will go ahead and as long as nobody wants to make a public comment, going once, going twice, gone. Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission's secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculasc.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And on tonight's consent calendar, we have one item, and that's the minutes from our April 20th, 2022 meeting.
I'll move the approval of the action minutes.
Moved by Commissioner Hagel. I'll second them. And...
I did read them, but I wasn't here at the meeting, so.
If you've... Did you review the video also, or you just reviewed the minutes?
I just reviewed them.
So you could simply abstain. We still could have a quorum with the two, three votes, so that's fine.
It's all abstained.
Okay, those... Commissioner Hagel made the motion. I seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay. You got that? Thank you. Okay. Public hearing. Any person... Excuse me. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission's secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculasc.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number And tonight, we're going to be combining item number two, three, and four into one item. So with that, I will read each of those, and then we'll get a staff report. Planning application number PA 21-1470, a development plan for the construction of an approximately 38,714 square foot industrial building located on the north side of Avenida Alvarado, approximately 525 feet east of Villa Industria. And those would be APN numbers 909-290-051, 909-290-052. And this item is being continued from Planning Commission meeting of March 16th, 2022. Item number three, planning application number PA 21-1471, a development plan for the construction of an approximately 19,727 square foot industrial building located on the north side of Avenida Alvarado, approximately 275 feet east of Villa Industria. And the APN number is 909-290-050. And this item is also continued from Planning Commission meeting of March 16th, 2022. And item number four is the third item on this combined item, and it's planning application number PA 21-1472, a development plan for the construction of an approximately 9,867 square foot industrial building located on the south side of Avenida Alvarado, approximately 600 feet east of Villa Industria. And that APN number is 909-290-011. And this item is also continued from the Planning Commission meeting of March 16th. So with those items read, could we have a staff report, please?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, these are planning application numbers PA 21-1470, 1471, and 1472, also known as MS Mountain View buildings. So just to restate the project descriptions, PA 21-1470 is a development plan for the construction of an approximately 38,714 square foot industrial building. PA 21-1471 is a development plan for the construction of approximately 19,727 square foot industrial building. And PA 21-1472 is a development plan for construction of an approximately 9,867 square foot industrial building. A little bit of background on the project site. Parcel map 21382 was recorded on January 12th, 1990. The recorded parcel map contains 61 parcels along Avenida Alvarado, Rionito, and Villa Industria, including the parcels for buildings 12, 13, and 20, which are before you tonight. This is the approved parcel map. Shows the location of building 12, building 13, and building 20. So the entire parcel map area has been previously rough graded. The improvement plans, including streets and storm drain, were previously approved. And the construction of Avenida Alvarado and Villa Industria is now complete. So as previously stated as well, the project was initially scheduled for hearing on March 16th of this year. It was continued off calendar to allow the applicant to consider some comments received from the public. So all three of the industrial buildings are located in the light industrial zoning district, meet the minimum parking requirements per the City of Temecula Development Code, are consistent with the City of Temecula Design Guidelines for industrial buildings, and provide an outdoor employee break area that includes tables, seats, umbrellas, and trash receptacles. So starting with building 12, this is the location, which is generally located on the north side of Avenida Alvarado, approximately 525 feet east of Villa Industria. I have the site plan before you. Shows the employee break area in the front of the project, along with the enhanced paving. And the enhanced paving is a requirement of the Development Design Guidelines. And then obviously, the large industrial building. Terms of the elevations, so the colors of this building along with the other two buildings are colors that you guys have seen before on any of the other seven previously approved buildings. And then the rendering of the building, the corner entrance. In the landscaping, total landscape on the project site is 36%, and that does include the Holly Oak, Texas Ranger, Lantern Gold Rush, and Fern Pine. Moving on to building 13, generally located on the north side of Avenida Alvarado as well, right next door to building 12, approximately 275 feet east of Villa Industria. Site plan again, showing the large industrial building on the right side of the site. The employee break area is located further back on the site. And then the enhanced paving on the entrance. Generally, same looking building, just with a different color scheme. And then the rendering. The landscaping on this site is 41.5%, and that does include the Mediterranean Cypress, Palo Verde, Hopsey Bush, and creeping fig. And finally, building 20, this one is located on the south side of Avenida Alvarado, directly across the street from the other two buildings, approximately 600 feet east of Villa Industria. And again, with the site plan, I have the building on the front of the project site, employee break areas in the rear, and then the enhanced paving on the entrance. So this time, you have a blue as the main color. And then the rendering of the entrance. The landscaping on this project is just over 56%, and that includes the London plane tree, the Mondel pine, the Indian hawthorn, and the Mexican honeysuckle. Terms environmental, it is categorically exempt per section 15332, which is class 32 for infield development projects. And staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA 21-1470, PA 21-1471, and PA 21-1472, subject to conditions of approval. That's the end of my staff report. I'm here to answer questions, and the applicant is present as well this evening.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions of staff? Mr. Hagel, you go ahead first.
Just have one question. Of the 61 sites that were approved, with these, approximately what percentage would be completed at this time, or approved for building at this time?
So on this sheet, on this slide, excuse me, you see that all these have already been constructed. They've been existing for a long time. And then the development of the first three phases is in this general area. And then we're on to this area here for phase four. So the buildings from phase one are well along in construction. Building, phase two has begun construction, and phase three is not under construction as of this time.
Okay. So we're getting towards the end of those 61 sites, then?
Correct. So eventually, the entire light industrial area over here will be built out as part of these Mountain View buildings.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You said there's enhanced paving on each one of them. Do you have a picture of what that's going to look like?
So it's with the score lines is the enhanced paving, and then the pewter is the color of the enhanced paving. It'll be the same for all of the, all phases, so it looks consistent. Kind of how the buildings all kind of look the same, so you know it's the same developer. It'll be the same with the enhanced paving entrances.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, are there bike racks?
There are.
Awesome. Big enough for e-bikes, too?
Right by the entrance of all the buildings.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have speakers?
Only one responded to questions.
Okay. Mr. Markham, did you want to speak?
I have questions.
Okay. We would like to have you come up anyhow. And if we don't have questions, you could wrap it up with a quick summary, if you don't mind, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, Chairman Larry Markham, representing the applicant. First of all, we concur with the conditions of approval on all three projects, and we have no comments with regard to the approvals. Just one comment with regard to the question. I think there are, I think there are two parcels that this developer does not own, that are sort of isolated. I think one at the bottom of the hill, I believe. And I think maybe one other one. Otherwise, Mr. Solaji and his group own all the remaining vacant parcels, and we're gradually working through them. I think we have two more phases to go after this approval, so.
Questions? No. My compliments on the project, and especially, I'm very impressed with the landscape coverage. It's quite a high percentage, so that's great to see.
Thank you. Appreciate that. One thing I will say is the market reception of the project has been phenomenal. We are getting almost billed in advance, sales in, you know, billed to suit almost internally. So it's been very, very successful, so.
That is fantastic news in this day and age. Thank you very much.
And we thank staff very much for, you know, helping us get through each one of the phases. It's been a very good association, so, and thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And discussion or a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Hagel, seconded by Commissioner Turley Trejo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's a three to zero vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Markham. And we'll move on to number, agenda item number five, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Temecula recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city council of the City of Temecula repealing and replacing Title VI of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding the keeping, maintenance, and possession of dogs, cats, fowl, and other animals, and providing for the control, licensing, and welfare thereof, modifying Title XVII of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding animal keeping and making a finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA), pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061, subsection B, subsection 3, long-range project number LR 21-0130. And excuse me for going off there in the middle, but these run-on sentences just baffle me sometimes. Anyhow, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir, we do. Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. Today, I'll be presenting to you the proposed animal control ordinance. This ordinance deals with amendments to two different titles of the Temecula Municipal Code, Title XVII zoning, as well as Title VI animals. Now, Title VI animals falls outside of the traditional purview of the Planning Commission. However, it is being presented to show the Planning Commission the totality of the ordinance. Animal Friends of the Valleys has been providing the City of Temecula a comprehensive animal control program since 1995, to include, but not limited to, field work, complaint and investigative services, sheltering lost stray or abandoned pets, quarantine and control of rabid animals, removal of deceased animals from the public right of way. An idea of what they do for us on an annual basis, Temecula averages 186 animal actions a month, and the return to owner rate is approximately 9% for cats and 33% for dogs. Title VI was last comprehensively updated in 1995. This ordinance is necessary to comply with state bill 573, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 573, a microchip requirement, consolidate animal keeping standards to Title VII, to Title VI from Title XVII for ease of use, implement a spay and neuter requirements, and remedy a land use inconsistency, and finally, implement right-to-rescue protections. The changes proposed to Title VI, reorganize Title VI for ease of use, require mandatory spay and neuter of cats and dogs with exceptions provided, require mandatory microchipping of cats and dogs with exceptions provided, and require the cleaning up after your dog on public property. Changes proposed to Title XVII, we're going to relocate animal keeping standards and animal land uses to Title VI. We're going to convert them from their current form into table form with no change to existing standards. We're going to remove animal shelter as a permitted-by-right land use and require a conditional use permit. Title VI animal changes do not change the number or breed of animals that may be kept. They do not modify any animal keeping standards. Title XVII zoning changes do not permit any new land uses or increase the intensity of existing uses. And additionally, it does not change zoning designation of any property. This item was taken to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on the 20th of last month. Commissioners Hagel and Ruiz were presented. And on the 26th of last month, the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee with Mayor Ron and Commissioner Alexander present for that. Staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA), pursuant to Title XIV, Chapter III, California Code of Regulations, Section 15061. Staff recommendation is to adopt a Planning Commission resolution recommending the city council adopt the proposed animal ordinance and find the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) per Section 15061. This concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions. And Chief Middleton from Animal Friends of the Valley has been good enough to come and answer any further questions that I may be unable to.
Okay, well, we'll ask the chief to come up when we open the public hearing. But until then, do we have any questions of staff? I'll start over here this time.
Of course, I have a question, right? Okay, so SB 573, that was passed in 2020 for microchipping? Well, that's like, that's a have-to. So if you have a pet now, you have to have it microchipped. Wow.
There are exemptions.
What would those be?
The exemptions would be if it is a show animal, whether that's a show dog or a show cat, there's an exemption for that. If it is a breeding animal, if the animal would be, is going to be breeding, and there would be an issue with the health of the animal and breeding with the microchip, that would be an exemption, as well as any working animals, whether that's a service dog, or a police, or first responder animal.
Hmm. And what if you don't?
If you don't?
Microchip your animal? I'm just curious. This is interesting.
There is also a medical exemption for microchipping. If a veterinarian has been to say that the dog is too old, there's an age exemption also. But if a veterinarian says that the dog is medically unfit to be microchipped, then that would be an exemption also. The way that the ordinance has worked in other cities at this time, if you are, your dog is found and does not have a microchip there, you could be issued a citation. So that's how it works at this point.
So is it for animals from 2020 on? Or you have animals that are grandfathered? Or how is that working? That's interesting.
No, it's not grandfathered in in any way. Once the ordinance would be accepted, then any animal found un-microchipped at that time could be cited. Now, there is a California mandatory microchipping law that if your animal shows up at the shelter and it is un-microchipped, it has to be microchipped before it leaves the shelter. That's California state law on that one. But I would give you an example. If we were at a park and a dog fight happened and animal control showed up, then if we checked your license at that time and you were not microchipped, then you could be issued a citation. It's always going to be officer discretion.
And what about the neutering?
Mandatory neutering, spaying and neutering would also, you could also be cited for that. Now, the other cities also have what's called a hobby breeder's license. So for, and I didn't mean to go ahead of the microchipping, that's okay.
No, feel free.
But as far as the spay and neuter, this is to stop just the average dog that's out there that's not spayed and neutered, that lives next door to the next dog that's not spayed and neutered, who goes through the fence when it's breeding time. So yes, you could be cited if it's not. But again, with the exemptions, there's a medical exemption. There is a, again, a AKC-registered exemption, so show dog exemption. So those are in there. It's worked very well in other cities, where we haven't had any problem with that. But the other cities also have, came out with a new licensing. It's called a hobby breeder. So if you have a dog that is, doesn't fit into any of those other categories, and you do not want to spay and neuter your animal, then you can get a hobby breeder license. Doesn't mean your breeding is just the name of the license. It's a little bit more expensive.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Also had a question for you, I think. Can you explain the CUP and Title XVII to me?
Yes.
Okay.
And Title XVII, 10-020 supplemental development standards, section two, conditional use permit required, let me see, B, dog kennels, dog training schools, and small animal shelters. On here, they require conditional use permit. If you look in Table 1706030, it shows it as a permitted-by-right use. So we have an inconsistency where we have a permitted-by-right by one title and a conditional use permit in another title. So we're just going with the more conservative of the two.
Gotcha. Were you going to say something, Matt? Oh, okay. So it's just kind of clarifying?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're doing here? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So dog and cat have to, or dog and cat have to be licensed each year. Is that correct?
That is correct. You can purchase up to a three-year license if your rabies is good for three years.
Okay. So when you apply for a license, is that the typical time you would get your animal microchipped?
That is correct. So at this time, if you have a new pet that you're bringing in, so you would get your animal microchipped, spayed and neutered, and then you would have the rabies shot about the same time, and you would come in and with license.
Okay. Do you have to come in to get a license, or can that be done online?
It can be done online. We have a complete portal for that.
Okay. So if it's done online and you don't have a record of it being microchipped, then you don't issue the license?
That is correct. It'll just be put on pause until we receive that. And then it would be dropped over into our license department. Our license department would contact you.
Okay.
Those items are usually uploaded, the certificate for microchipped, the certificate for spay, and also for rabies are all three uploaded. So it goes into a portal where it's viewed prior to that license being issued, anyway.
Right. Do you work with veterinarians at all regarding encouragement of people getting their animals microchipped and, for that matter, even licensed?
Absolutely. And the reason why we do, again, with the, the licensing is important because it's proof of rabies in your city. So, you know, in the City of Temecula, we have positive bats. We've had bats turned into the health department that have come back positive. So it is important to have a rabies shot. And again, licensing is for that purpose. But yes, we work with veterinarians all the time. We do receive rabies information from your veterinarian according to California state law also. And that's how we issue what's called a 30-day. We send people a notice saying, hey, you need to license your dog.
Okay. So the return to owners from cats and dogs that have been picked up, I think you said it was 30% for dogs and 6% for cats?
Yes.
Which to me seemed very low.
It is very low.
Is that mostly due to not being licensed, and you don't know who the owner is? Or is there other, other primary reasons for, for people not getting, you know, taking their animals back?
Well, number one, yes, would be that the contact. We need that contact. So if the animal is not wearing a collar prior to any of the, say, mandatory microchipping, the animal control officers in your city right now carry a microchip scanner on their trucks. So if they find a dog at a park, they will scan it. If it has a microchip, we call it in, and immediately, we contact the owner. A lot of times in those cases, the owner could be at work, could be out of town, dog could be babysitted, you know, by somebody else. So we're able to at least, a lot of times, return those animals in the field. So that's, that's the benefit of microchipping and that purpose. But if the owner is not available, comes to the shelter with a form of permanent ID, that animal is then held for 10 days. Sometimes, again, the owners are on vacation. They don't even know their dogs are missing, so.
So the, in case of dogs, 70% of the people that are not taking their animals back, is that then a, pretty much a choice on their part, or?
It could be a choice or time. Again, if the animal is, has no form of identification, we hold the animal for five days, and then it goes up for adoption.
Right.
We've had instances, it's very unfortunate, where an animal gets adopted maybe the sixth, seventh, 20th day, and then find out that the owner was out of town, and there was just no way to identify the stock. So that happens. But what we've noticed in the other cities that have, have accepted and got the ordinance for mandatory microchipping is we've gone up at least 10 to 15% per year in owner returns in the field, not just going to shelter. Once it's at the shelter, it becomes, you know, a burden to the city and everybody else. But if we can get that animal back in the field, and 10% a year, 10 to 15% a year, and RTOs in the field, that's amazing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one more question for staff. So this, the purpose of this ordinance is really just an updating because of this SB law in 2020? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. It's kind of off to the side of the main issue here, but the difference that Commissioner Hagel pointed out on recovery, people that, the cats are so much lower. In your professional opinion, why is there such a discrepancy in the number of people that reclaim their dogs versus cats? And neither one are very high, really. And neither one are very high, really.
Well, I'll speak out of experience, if I can, at this time. What we've noticed is people will get a cat, they'll keep the cat indoors, and usually keep the cat indoors for six months to a year. And the cat's fantastic inside. Then it gets too much inside, or the cat wants to be outside, they start letting them outside at that time. Once they're outside, they become less of a home burden. So once the cat's missing, they just don't come and get it. They realize they're, they just don't want it. So cats are much, much lower. Our cat, I did bring a statistic real quick, sorry, keep walking away from the microphone. For the four cities that started mandatory microchipping and cats also, and it doesn't say a lot, but one point six nine percent for the city of Lake Elsinore, they went up and they returned the owners within that first year. That doesn't sound like a lot, but if you're bringing in five thousand cats a year, that's a lot. That's a lot of cats to get back home to their owner. Plus, it also, remember, microchipping also brings on that responsibility, it brings on that responsible animal owner. So we can call them up and say, your cat's here. Then they have a choice. If they don't come with their cat, they still have fees. Their cat was at the shelter. So then we can collect the fees for the cities and say, you know, even if you don't want your cat, we'll find it a good home, that's not a problem. But, you know, it puts that owner responsibility back on them. So that helps, that helps out that way also.
And just one quick question, too. Does this include feral cats or just?
Well, again...
Because it seems like there would be a lot of feral cats more than dogs.
And there is, there is. In your city right now, we do have what's called a TNR program. So if we have a feral cat colony that has a custodian, in other words, somebody wants those kitties there, they like them there for purpose of rodent control, things like that, we will trap, neuter, release, and we do microchip those kitties. So if they are picked up again or re-trapped, once their ears tipped, we re-release them in the same area that they were picked up.
Very good. Thank you very much. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers? We do not. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. An entertaining discussion or a motion? Or both?
I will move the item.
I will second it.
Very good. The item is moved by Commissioner Turley Drayle, seconded by Commissioner Hagel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's a three to zero vote. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Doing a good job and take care of those animals.
Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to our commissioner reports. Do we have commissioner reports? I'll start on this side. Bye. No, I don't have one either. Subcommittee reports, looks like you had one.
We had one, yeah. Commissioner Ruiz and I did meet and we had an hour's worth of questions. And as you can see, between Title six and seventeen, I think it was seventy-seven pages, so it's very comprehensive. Did a great job. I loved the table. It's so much easier to get that information very quickly out of it rather than how we had it before, which was, you know, reading through paragraph after paragraph trying to find what you're looking for. So that's, that's, that's great.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, yes?
Actually, I do have a QLMP report. We met, wow, I don't even remember, the sixteenth? The fourteenth? August fourteenth? August fourteenth? That seems like about a year ago, but it wasn't. Yeah, so we met and we talked about the vision of the city and kind of writing out a mission state, not vision, but mission statement, vision statement of the city. So that was interesting. The consultants kind of wrote one and Matt Ron kind of poo-pooed it. And we all had our input. And so we're, they're coming up with another statement for June second is our next and last meeting, correct? Maybe?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, how many meetings have we had? Six?
So June, June second will be our sixth meeting.
Yeah. So the meetings are, I'll take an adjective from Matt Ron, robust. That's like his favorite word. And those meetings have been robust and they've been, I have felt like I needed to be there. Like, I hope everybody has, we've kind of lost some people along the way, I've noticed, but I think they've been really important. And I feel like our voice has been heard and hopefully I have represented Planning Commission well. But so our last meeting is June second and we'll adopt a mission statement and kind of come up with our final plan for quality of life for the next twenty years. So that's that report.
Since you brought it up, I do have a question. How, how?
For me?
Yes, well, you're on the committee, you may have to defer to staff on this.
I might.
The surveys that were put out by the city on the website, how is that information incorporated into your effort? Are you presented like with summaries or do you just get like a?
No, it's totally incorporated. Like, that's kind of the first thing they give us of what, what those results from the survey was. I think it was eight hundred people that they received.
So the entire effort started with the True North Survey, which was the community-wise, statistically valid survey. So all of that went to the BRC, that kind of started the process. And then we did a more specific quality of life master plan survey. We had over eight hundred respondents. And that was summarized and presented to the Blue Ribbon Committee. And then we're finishing up with a youth and young adult survey that's in process now. So we're working with the school district in Mount San Jacinto to try to get that demographic. They didn't necessarily have a high response rate. And the Blue Ribbon Committee is trying to find out why some of those young adults leave and what takes them so long to come back. And we're trying to figure out how to keep them in Temecula. So we have some very specific questions. And that survey closes the end of the month and we'll report that back at June second.
Well, with eight hundred responses, generally being a lumper and not a splitter myself, I'm just curious how eight hundred responses to a question can be summarized. You know what I'm saying? Is, in other words, when they all come in, there's eight hundred different variations of an answer on one question? I don't, I don't know the details on it, but I'm just curious how that's reported to you. Is there like a lump into categories as to?
Yeah, so one question will have five multiple choice questions. So then it's, it's bar chart based on the survey responses.
What about filling, can you fill in your own questions?
You can. There were some questions that were open-ended that had a lot of good feedback written responses.
Okay.
And those were provided as well. They were summarized in the presentation.
Okay.
Tried to distill some of the more poignant...
I guess what I was curious about is how, I don't want to use the word watered down, but how consolidated, I guess, would, somebody's got to make a decision like these, these three answers are, you know, pretty well the same. Can we lump everything into that one category? Is that kind of the way?
I think myself and the consultant try to do that, and then we feed that information to the Blue Ribbon Committee, and then they further distill that in their decision-making.
Very good. So I guess I was just curious if there's kind of any, I hope not, any editorial changing when that is summarized? In other words?
No, the survey responses, that summary report will be made available in full on the website. It won't be included in the final document, but it's certainly part of the appendices that's made available to the public. So if someone wants to see the full set of responses, they can do that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the detail on that, Matt. Appreciate it.
I was just gonna...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna add on to what you said, Matt, too. There was a comment at the last meeting about, about the surveys and feeling like it didn't represent the people. But in my opinion, I feel like it did represent the people because you had more people answer questions, for example, who owned a home than rented a home. And, or, right? Would you say that's correct?
Yeah, that was part of the debate at the last meeting.
And so I was actually talking to Mary Ann Edwards afterwards about that. And I said, you know, it feels like, you know, and I don't want to generalize here because you're afraid to say anything anymore, but, you know, if you own a home, sometimes you have a little more ownership in that city and what's going to happen in that city because sometimes if you're renting, you may be transit, transit...
Transitory.
Transitory. And so I think the survey itself, even though maybe some people think, oh, there's only eight hundred responses, I think it was, it was indicative really of the majority of the room who are from all different, you know, representing all different groups in the city, how they also would have maybe answered that survey, which hopefully they all took that survey. I mean, I did, but, so my point being that when that question was, when that was raised, I was like, no, I think it does, I think it does represent, you know, our city for the people that care enough to respond, right? I mean, that's part of it. Like, you take that time to respond to a survey because you care about the city that you live in. I'm making a general statement. I'm sure there's people that care about the city that didn't do the survey, but do you see what I'm trying to say?
Do.
So I do feel like it was valuable, the survey, because I think sometimes you feel like, oh, it's a survey, they didn't call me, right? They didn't call me, it's not valuable. But I felt like it was valuable. It, for the most part, you know, I feel like it spoke to what the people in the room, majority-wise, believed the city was, you know, represented. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. And it seems to me eight hundred is a pretty good representative sample, but from a statistical standpoint.
It is. When we did the housing element, we did a survey for that, and we had over eight hundred responses, and we felt like that was pretty good. So we were trying to, you know, pass that eight hundred mark and we kind of just matched it. But I would just add that we've done a lot of surveys throughout the city and people might be surveyed out. So between the True North Survey at the beginning of the process, then the specific QLMP survey, and then the youth survey, all of the pop-up events, all of the social media outreach, when we have the draft document, we're going to make that available on the website and anyone from the community can go in there. And there'll be a notes section where they can make notes in the margins and that will be compiled for our consultants and we'll take into account all of that feedback. So we're not done gathering feedback. There will be more opportunities. And I think at the end, when we present all of the outreach that we've done, you'll be very pleased.
Great, thank you for the explanation. It's, it sounds like a very complicated effort and you guys are holding up your end of the bargain, that's for sure. So good luck with that. And we look forward to seeing the product. And I understand that we will get a chance, the presentation will be made before the commission and we'll have a chance to give feedback on it if we choose to.
That's correct. Yes.
Great.
Just a quick comment. There's been, you know, a fair amount of discussion over the last year or so about getting new ideas into the city, reaching out, getting people's input and opinions. And I think this process has proven that I doubt if there's another city that can match what, what the city has done to reach out to its citizens. And I think eight hundred was a very big number. It was way more than I expected that would, that would take the time to do a survey. But I think this whole process has proven that we do reach out, we communicate well with our, with our residents, our residents communicate back very well, they're not afraid to speak up, which I think brings the word robust in. And that we couldn't do any more to get great ideas and, you know, a lot of different good opinions to help run this city. And congrats to everything that you've done to, to bring that about. And I just want to say the, the efforts the city has gone to communicate over the last year or two, again, I don't think there's another city that can compare to it. So I think we've done everything that we can as a city to bring in ideas, bring in fresh thinking, talk to everybody, whether they're a four-year-old or, you know, an eighty-year-old. Everybody's got, you know, an opinion, everybody has a need, and I think we're getting to hear it all. So that's great.
That's great. Just not every, every idea is a good idea, and I will point out, no bail is a, is a terrible idea. So that being said, eight hundred comments, there's a lot of comments, and I'm sure that they can be lumped and split and everything else. And I guess my big concern is that that all comes out unwashed and available for everybody because, I mean, there shouldn't be more weight put on...
Should all be very transparent, available to everyone.
I, I, I'm totally on board and look forward to the presentation, so.
We're in the home stretch, we want to finish strong, so.
You can wear your Green Bay Packer jersey when you get done, Matt. I'll patch him up.
I'll remember that.
Very good. So that's the end of our subcommittee reports, and thank you for the QLLP or whatever, I got messed it up probably. Mr. Watson, Deputy City Manager, Community Development Director.
Yeah, just real quick, real short, but May twenty-first, city's having its first culture fest out here in front of City Hall. And there's going to be a booth for commissioners, boards and commissioners. So it's just going to be, kind of be there to represent your commissioner board, talk to folks, represent the city, and just generally engage with the community, let them know what the commission does, trying to spur more interest in, in involvement with the city. If you're interested in taking a shift, so to speak, a couple, you know, twenty minutes, thirty minutes there, just let me know. We can certainly get you organized in there to take a spot and represent the commission to the community. So let me know if you want to do that. That's it.
I can do that. I was planning going.
Thank you, Luke.
Okay.
The beginning of the day would be awesome.
Okay.
Public Works, report Mr. Moreno, please.
Yes, with regards to the projects that you approved tonight for the industrial buildings on Avenida Alvarado, I thought maybe the applicant would have mentioned it. However, he kind of alluded to the relationship we've had with them, and I wanted to make sure you were aware that they are doing extra improvements that they were not conditioned to do by filling in some sidewalk, sidewalk gaps along Avenida Alvarado, all the way down to Diaz, they're going to be striping for us, too. So we appreciate their efforts, but I want to make sure you guys were aware of the extras that they've kind of done for us, just due to the relationship we have. And then Avenida Alvarado will eventually be Overland Drive. It goes over there. So that current project is currently around sixty percent design and it is in our CIP division. So Nino Abad is working with a consultant, but eventually that whole corridor will go over the creek and then go all the way over to Margarita. So that'll be a nice area to bike, you know, at some point when we get all of this done. And then lastly, Public Works and Planning met with Mark Lancaster. He's the Development Director for the Riverside County Transportation Department. We were going over drainage issues, transportation issues that, where we need kind of a joint effort because we do have, our city boundary matches up to the county and we've got some issues going on. So I just want to make sure the commission knows in case there are questions you have about the county-city relationship and with regards to traffic, drainage, anything that we're doing with them. And we can relay those thoughts because we're going to be meeting with him quarterly now. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
And just, could I just tag on to that a little bit there? We've actually been organizing some coordination meetings with the county, basically at all levels of the city government. So basically, department, department, specialty to specialty, to just strengthen the communication there. So again, like, like Ron just said, if you have any questions about what's going on in the county or concerns, just let us know because we have, we're working with our counterparts over there on these issues.
Didn't we have an update on the traffic light on Butterfield to replace the stop sign by the, by the high school? Or the school, I should say.
Yeah, he's, Mark mentioned that, that, well, we have to talk with Dennis Akuna, who's the traffic engineer, and you know Dennis. And so they, at one point, dropped it out of their CIP, and so they're exploring putting it back in.